We will go to a video. Okay, Dr. Sligle?
Thank you, Board of Education. Earlier this week, this school district was visited by two separate news agencies, one Channel 9 and one Channel 41. I wanted to share with you tonight Channel 9's story that they did about the Integrated Learning House and have some comments afterwards. So, roll the video, please.
High school are doing some hands-on work this school year as they construct a full home on their campus.
KABC 9's Matt Evans shows us why the house is serving a bigger purpose. It's a construction site like many you'd see all across Kansas City, but this one is on the campus of a high school, and there's a special reason behind it. It's not your typical classroom, but students here at Ray Peck High School are taking hands-on learning to the next level. From the electrical...
This is already the center of the trust.
To the HVAC.
That will attach onto here and will face straight 90-degree angle down.
To those organizing it all.
We're managing this project, learning a little bit the ins and outs of construction management.
Everything is led by students.
Just shows how everybody is on the same page with the same vision.
And that vision is one of helping their fellow students.
I don't know how to explain it, but it feels like meaningful in the way that we get to build this, not just only for regular people, but for someone who actually needs it.
This two-bedroom Integrated Learning House will be used to teach students with special needs, how to live on their own after high school.
I think it's going to have a huge impact.
They will learn things like how to do laundry, how to grow a garden, and basic home maintenance.
Sometimes transferring skills to the real setting can be a challenge.
All at this house right next to the high school.
It's amazing, one, the school's right there.
The construction is set to be complete here by August so the home can continue to serve students for years to come. In Peculiar, Matt Evans, KABC 9 News.
I am so impressed. Much of that project has been funded through donations and partnership.
Yes, there's so much to be proud of in that video. First of all, our students and our instructors who have made that a reality. I look at Dr. Barr, Scott Dobson, entire crew out here who have really kind of got that ball rolling. Less than 12 months ago, Board, it was just a thought and a conversation with your support and you allowing us to kind of dream big. Big things are happening, so thank you for that. And this is something that we're going to continue to talk about at our gala in a few weeks for the Ed Foundation, and we can't wait till we cut the ribbon and get kids inside and really see what this place can do. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, I think when Dr. Sligle and team brought that idea to us last year, we didn't realize it was going to be as quick as it was, and it's amazing how we can integrate. It's an Integrated Learning House, but we are integrating all facets of our students right now in there with Lead and the high school classes that are involved, so it's very exciting to see, so I'm very, very happy with that.
And kudos to our communications team for getting the media coverage. And looking back at Michelle, it is Channel 41 that's doing the spot on Sunday, correct? Yes, Channel 41 is doing a spot scheduled for Sunday, maybe more of a features-type story, so we'll see what that entails as well.
And now, we have the Raymore Elementary update.
Yes, as Mrs. Miller comes to the podium, I do want to say a little bit about her because she's been the principal at Raymore Elementary School for the past nine years. She came to the district in 2005, was a third-grade teacher for eight years at Raymore Elementary. And from 2013 to 2015, she was an administrative intern at Raymore Elementary School, and in her role, she functioned much like an assistant principal, working alongside the illustrious Dr. Michelle Hoffman. Before coming to Ray Peck, Mrs. Miller worked in Hickman Mills, C1, from 1995 to 2003. She was a third-grade and special education teacher. This might be her 25th year in education or somewhere thereabouts. We kind of roll out...
I'm wearing that.
Yeah, I'm wearing that. Thirty, wow. We roll out this red carpet because Mrs. Miller's retiring at the end of this year and leaves big shoes to fill. She's here tonight with Mrs. Penny to talk about the happenings at Raymore Elementary School, so Mrs. Miller.
Is the song... Oh. Well, good evening and thank you for having us here tonight. It's always exciting to come and talk about Raymore Elementary. As I started thinking about this presentation, and probably because retirement is right around the corner for me, I did not have enough time tonight in the short amount of time I had to talk about all the great things that are going on at Raymore Elementary. But as I started thinking and going through it, a couple of themes kept coming up, and so that's the direction we went tonight, and that's what we want to highlight for you so you get a little insight into Raymore. One of those was just our family connections, our school-family connections and the positive culture that we have at Raymore. And the second being some things that we've really been working hard on over the past couple of years, and that is getting our students to feel ownership, get involved in projects, and bring in some of that real-world learning that we know can trickle down all the way to elementary. So those are going to be the two areas we're going to look at tonight. Like I said, there's many other things that I'd love to share with you, but we're excited just to share those. At Raymore, our family connections are really important to us, and we know how important it is for our students to make connections with adults, but we also know how important it is for students to make connections with each other. And we go beyond the classroom, beyond the grade level. We want to think about the connection of the older students and the younger students. And so we have Tiger Buddy classrooms that we partner up with older students and younger students. They meet every other month for a lesson, and those are lessons that build off of our SEL curriculum, Second Steps, and they might take a spin off of that. It might be something that they've learned in class with that. And then we also do a lot of lessons on just our building-wide expectations: be safe, be respectful, and be responsible. And through that, we see connection, collaboration, creativity, but then a little something else sparked out of that, and that has started to be mentorship. And we noticed that when we started partnering these students up together, very often later on, when there was a younger student maybe struggling or just needed someone to read to them or was having a rough day and just needed a positive word, or we had older students then already connected that could go help, or vice versa. Sometimes it's a younger student helping an older student. So that's just been kind of some exciting things that we see as we build on those Tiger Buddy classrooms. And you can see that the power of yet, positive thinking are some of those lessons that we do together in our Tiger Buddies. Student-led assemblies have become kind of sort of a tradition at Raymore Elementary now. We always are looking for ways that our students can have some ownership, make connections, and that has been through the Buddies like I talked about, but then every other month, if we don't do a Buddy lesson, then we have an assembly, and it either focuses on those SEL lessons I talked about or those building-wide expectations. And we have fifth graders that lead those assemblies, and they meet with our counselor, Mrs. Beck. They plan them out, they practice. We've even incorporated a few of our younger students in there now, too. So it's pretty exciting to see that happen. Our Buddy classrooms go together to the assembly. They sit together while these students lead the assembly. And then, we have a new family member this year. That's really brought a lot of joy and connection to our building as well, and that's Tasha, our therapy dog. And thank you to the board and our district for allowing us to be a pilot in this. I can't tell you just what joy she brings. The kids are always asking, "Is Tasha here today?" They come in sad, or if there's a problem, she seems to be the magic one that helps with that. So that's just added to that connection piece at Raymore Elementary that we have really enjoyed having. The other part that I wanted to highlight tonight is just a lot of the cool projects that are going on at Raymore and that student ownership and real-world learning. We took on MyView, our reading resource, about three years ago, and the really neat thing that teachers got excited about was the Week 6. After Week 6, after they had done stories and done their lessons, there was always like an integrated project that came with it. So we started working on that, and then teachers started asking questions like, "What if we partnered this with our science?" Or, "What if kids had a say-so in what this looked like?" Or, "How could we get kids to be more involved?" And so those discussions just kind of started leading to more planning and more organization, and then this year, we've really seen some of that come to life. Mrs. Penny was part of these projects as well, so she's going to talk a little bit about the second-grade community beautification project.
And we did plan this, just FYI, with 20, so this was...
Yes, we usually don't dress alike, but...
No. Yeah, this project was all about how to improve your community, and so all throughout the five weeks, they read about communities, and so they brainstormed ideas on how can they improve... They just went to Raymore Elementary, "How can we beautify Raymore?" And so they decided to work on our learning garden and build bird feeders and wind chimes, and we also did the Tigers cups on the fence. And then they thought, "Okay, well, we've done Raymore, but what can we do out in the community?" So they decided to make the wind chimes for businesses in the Raymore community and gave a little note saying that they are special. So I know the Painted Posey still has theirs up to this day.
Also this year, as our building leadership was meeting this summer and planning things, we started talking about our announcements at school. We had video announcements every day, and you know, it was the traditional, "What's for lunch? Whose birthday is it? What event is going on that day?" And we were like, "Hmm, it's just getting kind of..." How could we make that better? How could we liven that up? And how do the fifth-grade students know something cool going on in third grade? Or how does the first graders know what might be something cool going on in fourth grade? So Mrs. Bogashnik, our librarian, and Mrs. Moore, our fifth-grade teacher, they got together and they had a few students that were kind of entrusted in a news crew. And so we built the Tigers news crew, and it's fifth-grade students who, in this picture, you can see they're planning with Mrs. Bogashnik. They plan out what news story they're going to do. They actually ask teachers, "Is there anything you'd like us to highlight?" They come up with ideas themselves. They have anchors, they have reporters, they have a student that does the videoing. They all have a part in it. They built a news desk, and they will record these, and then we put them out to the whole building so they can see the cool things that are going on and what other students are doing. We interview people. The latest interview was last week when our new principal for next year, Mrs. Finau, they interviewed her, and so that'll be our next newscast. So we have a little clip of one that was back this winter where they interviewed Officer Hornbeck.
This is a Tiger news presented by the fifth-grade news crew. Earlier this week, I interviewed Officer Hornbeck. Let's watch it. Hi, my name is Hannah, and today we are with Officer Hornbeck, our resource officer, our school resource officer.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you today?
Doing pretty good. How are you?
Good.
Fantastic.
Thanks for asking. Can you tell us why you decided to be a police officer?
I decided to be a police officer because I like helping people, and I get to help people in a lot of different ways, whether it's if there's a car accident, if I'm taking the police report, if they just have questions they need to be answered, or if I'm in the schools, helping you guys solve problems and do fun things like interviews and stuff like that.
Nice.
So it's just a short little clip. It's really cool. They have even went and interviewed like third graders who were doing projects, doing some of these projects, and asking them about, "Where'd you get your idea? How did you choose to do this?" So that's... That's been really cool. Here we go. Mrs. Penny's going to talk about a third-grade project and how the kids kind of took a spin on it and had some ideas on their own and where that went.
I was really involved in this project, and this one was student ownership by far. What they wanted you to do was pick a famous person who they think is a hero and do a presentation on it. But what they realized, all throughout the unit, they read people who were not famous, but they were just people who took time, dedication, problem-solved, were created and determined. And so they were reading a book about the plastic problem, and I don't know if you know about the great plastic problem that we have in our oceans, but they also started to see some things happening in their building as well, too. And so they asked Mrs. Pennington, "Could we please talk about the plastic problem and what can we do here at school and at our homes?" And so she's like, "Absolutely." And they were so excited about this project because they wanted to do it. They took different roles in researching, "What is plastic? What can we do at school and at home to help?" They also had a math group who looked at the budget, which I think you guys would love, to see how can we save money on maybe plastic garbage bags and items like that. This was a great project that they did. Okay, I have a picture of them presenting ways that you can help at school and at home. They also wanted me to show what math that they were working out to see, how to budget with using plastics. What they're doing at school is they're encouraging kids to only take the utensils they need at lunch and don't just take all of them. They're also starting to encourage students to bring water bottles, not the plastic ones, but one that we can refill in our filling stations. So this one was great because they had ownership. We invited people from the district to come and hear our presentation, and we're trying to get signage out in our school so that we can at least help be a hero in our school with the plastic problem.
And tonight, like I said, those are just some highlights. Our K-35 students are all working on different projects. It's been really cool to see it. They're getting to be able to have some voice and choice in that, some collaboration, those critical thinking skills, all those things that are leading up to the Channel 9 newscast that we just saw with our kids building the house. So it's really cool. We're excited about it, and come see us anytime you'd like in action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was amazing, and we love seeing how the kids are having their own voices and getting up to where it's projects and being very involved. We're not just sitting and staring at a screen, you know, so I think we all appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to say thank you for Raymore Elementary. I'm a little biased because both my kids attended Raymore Elementary back when Dr. Hoffman was the principal. So it's still our little family for my kids and their teachers that invested in them as well.
I just want to apologize for all the water bottles that are here. Plastic bottles. That was very unfortunate. Tell them I appreciate the environmental aspect, you know, sustainability, the responsibility that, you know, we all have in this and starting them young, thinking about that is awesome.
Can we put it in the minutes that next meeting we'll all bring our own cups?
I won't be at the next meeting.
Except for you. You're coming to the next meeting because you're going to dance. Onto consent items. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Onto the Raymore or the Ray Peck School, Ray Peck Public School Foundation update.
Yes, as Jody Houston's coming to the podium. She gives the update annually around this time and also has a special invitation for the board for April the 5th. Jody?
Thank you for letting me come. I always enjoy giving an update, and I love to talk about the foundation.
First of all, last night, we've had lots of fun things happening, lots of great things. Last night, we were able to sponsor and partner with the district with the Teacher of the Year and the Support Staff Employee of the Year. That's always fun, and it was a great night. We love celebrating the staff. We also, hopefully you've seen this, won the chili competition. It's always a competition between Belton and Ray Peck, and last year was the first year we've ever won anything. Eric Collins made our chili, and we won two awards last year. This year, we won all of them. Every single category, we won. So I'm very, very proud of that, and you might see something at the Taste of Ray Peck that we're telling you about that might involve this, so you might want to bid on. Something very exciting. We honored three distinguished alumni in February, three wonderful candidates. We've been giving out impact grants. Hopefully, you've seen that all over the place. Just this last week, we gave $15,500, but this whole year, we've given out over $42,000. So that's a big increase from what we've done in the past, and that's because of the donors that we have and the support we have from the district and also great applications and great grant requests, so we're excited to continue to do that. Major saver update, I'm happy to say, we're up again this year. I was a little concerned. It was snow days at the beginning of the campaign. Usually, that does not end up being a good campaign, but we raised over $30,000. Last year was at 27, almost 28,000, so... And there's still things trickling in. If you don't have yours, please come see me. I still have some, so I'd love to sell you some. They're great gifts, too, so if you have friends, clients, anything, we would love to sell those to you. Scholarships are now open. We have 15 this year, different kinds. Some of them are sponsored directly by the foundation, then some others have been done in memory or in honor, just some exciting things happening. So if you have any seniors or you know seniors, please be sure to have them fill it out. They're online, they're on Navient, all of the things. And then, this is the big invitation. As you probably have heard, we have the Taste of Ray Peck. It is Saturday. It's like two weeks away, Saturday, April 5th. It is going to be super fun. Bring your disco, 70s, whatever. If you don't want to dress up, please still come. It will still be fun. It will be fine, but it's going to be a super fun theme. We've got over 200 people already signed up, fantastic donations. We also have a raffle going on right now. For $100, you can choose between four trips, amazing trips, or $2,500 cash. So that's just an easy way to support the foundation as well, and you can start that now. We will also be opening up the auction, the silent auction, on April Fool's Day, I believe. No fooling, but April Fool's Day, we are going to open the app. So if for some reason you can't come, which I know you all want to come, it's super fun, but if you can't, you can still log on and support the foundation that way. And also, our Fund in Need project, he kind of indicated that a little bit ago, is the Integrated Learning House. So we're coming up with some fun ideas on how to get people to sponsor and to give toward that project. And then, again, I always appreciate your support of the foundation. We feel very supported and appreciated, and I appreciate all of you as well. Thank you for letting me speak. Have a great evening.
Are there any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
When can we bid on the trips?
Now, today, right now. If you go to your phone...
It's a raffle, Karen.
Yes, for $100, you get a chance, and there's only 100 tickets being sold. So you have a good chance of winning the trip.
So go, just go to the...
Go to our website, Facebook, anything like that. It's there, but yes, it can start today. We've already sold some. Any other questions? Again, thank you so much.
Thank you. Onto the technology program review?
Yes, Ryan Gooding will present the program review for technology tonight, and you are free to ask him all the hard questions you want, so he's ready for them.
Oh, yes, yes, please. So I'm starting this meeting with Dr. Volker just walking over to me and saying, "Is the stream working?" Which I am quite certain it is working, but that is a great way to step up here in front of you guys. So the stream is, the stream is working, but wow, that's a great way to start. So, thank you, guys, for letting me come and speak with you tonight. I'm always excited to come up and talk with you about the state of technology in the Raymore Peculiar school district. So over the next few minutes, I'm going to highlight some progresses that we've made in digital learning, infrastructure, security, and operational efficiency. Technology continues to be a driving force behind student success and district-wide effectiveness. So I'm going to start here by kind of introducing my team, and needless to say, nothing that I talk about today could happen without all of these people that you're looking at on the board right now. So everything from our instructional technology people to our network administrators, to our system administrators, to our technicians in the building, everything that we talk about today is just because of the great work that they do every day when they come in and do their job. So obviously, I'd like to recognize all of them. I wish they could all be here with me tonight, speaking with you, but I can guarantee you they don't want to be here speaking with you. So... But I do want to recognize them and tell them how much I do appreciate what they do and really their focus and their commitment to the mission of the district and what we're trying to do with students. So impacts of the program. The technology department has broad effects across the district, so our efforts directly support digital learning efforts, which include our one-to-one devices, the tech integration in the classroom, operational efficiency, which can be anything from automating accounts for students and staff members to make life easier for them, to cloud solutions that allow us to reduce the physical footprint of our equipment on campus and allow people to get access to things that they never could before from home. Security, we have a major emphasis on security in the district, and that includes firewall, endpoint protection, multi-factor authentication, and staff training, and all those things we'll talk a little bit more about later in the presentation. Connectivity for students, including Wi-Fi, which we'll talk about again, and our network, our wide-area network that connects all of our buildings together through fiber that allows everybody to communicate with each other and allows technology to work across the district. And communication systems, which includes parent portals, like our new Focus Parent Portal, which we'll talk about a little bit later, collaboration tools like Canvas or Google Meets, which people are on and using every single day. Our emergency alert system, we support, which allows us to be ready, our teachers to be ready with lists of students in case something happens during the school day that they need to take action against. So ultimately, we strive to ensure that technology remains accessible, functional, and aligned with the district mission. What you're looking at here, just a quick snapshot, this is not supposed to be comprehensive. This isn't by any means everything that we manage in the district, but just a quick look at some things. And those of you that have been on the board for a while probably don't remember this chart, but the computer lab equipment you'll see has dramatically decreased for our students. So as more and more of our applications have gone web-based, we've had less need to have desktop computers in classrooms for students to get to work on. So these are really kind of focused labs that you're looking at at this point for like CAD or for esports or for our programming students, for our journalism students is really what we're talking about with those. Our presentation equipment, including our interactive displays, we're getting closer and closer to getting rid of all of our smart boards, so we're excited about that. Projectors and smart boards are definitely on their way out, and we'll speak more about that a little bit later. Our one-to-one devices, student Chromebooks. You can see we're very heavy with our Chromebooks in our tablets. So our tablets are for our K1 students, and our Chromebooks are for everybody else, 2 through 12, and then you can just kind of look and see the staff equipment that we have there as well. So like I said, this isn't close to everything we manage, but just kind of a high-level look at kind of the devices that are out there right now. So customer support. This is a kind of a breakdown of work orders, completed work orders, and kind of our goals and the goals that I have for my team. It includes our average response time, our average resolution time, and our average time in progress. So we are really looking to have an average response time to be at two days or less. We're looking to have an average resolution time, so the situation has been resolved in under three days, and obviously, we're not quite there, but we're working towards that. So our completed work orders, if you look at 2022 to 2023, it looks like we jumped from about 1,400 work orders to over 6,000 work orders. Let me explain to you what happened there. In 2324, we brought in Incident IQ as our way for the district to manage work orders and for people to put things into the system. Up until that point, we had really been more of a, "I'm going to email you, I'm going to grab you and pull you in here, I'm going to send you a text, maybe I'll call the help desk." But starting in 2324, we really started to focus our buildings and our administrators and our staff, which I really want to give a shout out to them, to really focus on using our system to put those work orders in. So you see that gigantic, that spike? I think that probably we were pretty close to that all along anyway, but that is just a much more accurate reflection of what's really happening as far as work orders getting completed. So I'm pretty proud of that 6,000 work orders for 12 people in an apartment. That's a pretty heavy lift, and so they do a good job with a smile on their face and provide what I think is... And so they, they do a good job with a smile on their face and provide what I think is, is really great customer service, so, so I'm proud of them for that. This is our detected intrusion attempts. Last time I was talking with you guys, you guys had some questions about how many, how many attempts do we get a month, and what's that, what exactly does that look like? Don't necessarily want to get into a ton of details of what that looks like, but I did want to give you guys some numbers about detected intrusions. So you can see it kind of ebbs and flows a little bit, there's not, not necessarily really consistent. I broke it down into critical high and low, so you could see kind of how, what, what we thought the attempt, the intrusion attempt was for us anyway, or how much damage it could have possibly done. So rest assured, these were all attempts that we thwarted, that we saw coming, that we mitigated, and did not cause downtime or issues or data loss or anything like, like that in the district. But I did just want to provide some numbers to you guys, had a little bit of that, because I know you had a question about that, that last time I was, I was up here with you. So, next is gonna be on security. So with the intrusion attempts that I just put up there in mind, I wanted to share some of our things that we're doing for security to, to thwart those efforts and to, to keep our students' data and our students safe. So the first thing is Threat Locker, which is a zero-trust security measure. And basically, it gives us really granular control over computers, so we can do it at a micro level, we can also do it at a macro level where we can control district-wide, but we can also control applications at a computer level, even a user level, of what you're able to run, what you're not able to run. And also get alerts whenever people are trying to maybe run applications that they're not supposed to, supposed to be running. We have a Palo Alto Firewall that you guys approved, probably about a year and a half ago. And that allows us to have some advanced threat detection, allows us to do some deep packet inspections, some application-based control, that allows us to have a lot more control and a lot more insight into what's going on on our network and what's coming in and out of our network. Our CrowdStrike Falcon EDR, which are endpoint detection and response. That's the, the group that we team with that gives us twenty-four-seven protection against attempts on our network. And so, you know, it's really nice for us to be able to leverage people that do that every single day, and gives us some proficiency that we may not necessarily have whenever we're dealing with some more serious threats to our network. And Incident I, or, excuse me, InfoSec IQ, which is loved throughout the district, because that is our phishing simulator. So we send out emails, and you guys get those emails as well, that could be phishing, could be not. As that, as that software has kind of matured, those emails have gotten better and better, so we've gotten more and more hits on it. But it also keeps people aware and keeps people vigilant. And also, we send out monthly trainings, which I think you guys also get those monthly trainings, too, I don't know if you watch them or not, but search your email, you can check them out. And tells us if they, you know, we get to see if the teachers have fulfilled those, so I can talk with principals and stuff like that to see if they, if they're watching those videos. And it just gives them a little bit more information about password security, about data, data protection, data privacy, phishing, things like that. Just in short, little two or three-minute fun, fun, I think they're fun, some people don't think they're fun, but fun little skits that, that play out for them. We've also instituted MFA Multi-Factor Authentication district-wide, so anybody that logs on to a Ray Peck computer has to get on their phone, has to get a text on their phone or a dual authentication on their phone, so they're having to authenticate to make sure that they are the right person, it's not an unauthorized access. We've instituted a light-speed filter to make sure that we're SIPA compliant, and also make sure that we're USAC compliant, so we can keep our E-Rate money coming in from the government. And that just gives us a greater vision into what our students are doing on the internet. Basically, our content filter, and allows us to protect students and make sure we're keeping them safe. And then, something new this year is LightSpeed Classroom. And LightSpeed Classroom gives our teachers actually the ability to monitor students in their class and see what's on their Chromebook screens. It also allows them to mute the Chromebook screens, allows them to take their Chromebooks and send them to a website if they want to. It just gives them a lot more management of the devices at the classroom level, so they don't have to ask us to do things. If they, you know, want to send all their kids to one website, they're able to do that with the push of a button with that, with that program. So that's been, that's been really nice with them, for our teachers. So, next, I want to talk a little bit about our district operations and our efficiency. So in addition to security, we also focus on making sure that our district remains efficient. So one of the things we've instituted is that Incident IQ, which I told you about a little bit earlier. That has improved our response time to our, our staff. It's also allowed us to do a much better job of tracking the issues that we're having and the resolutions to those issues, which gives me a lot of power as far as planning for multi-year planning and planning what we need to do next year, what resources I need to have available for my people. Another one is LightSpeed Digital Insight. That is a program that we're using that actually tracks the applications that our students are using and the time that they're using them. So it really lets us kind of look at what kind of bang for the buck we're getting for applications that we're putting in front of our students. So some of those education applications, one of the things that we're really monitoring right now is School AI. So we're using our, we're using our digital insights to monitor what buildings are using it, down to what, we can look at it down to the teacher level of what, where it's being used in classrooms. And that's gonna help us on the academic side, if we want to find kind of pockets of excellence, we want to find people that are actually using it that we can maybe leverage for other teachers around the district uses training and things, and things like that. And Focus Data Analytics, so with our Focus Program, we have a data analytics program that allows us to see at a district level really high-level data on students, pretty much everything that's in Focus, we can pull on that Focus Data Analytics. But it's also allowing us to push that down to the building level, so we give that same analytics power to our principals. And then they're able to pull those same reports for grades, tests, attendance, discipline, all those things are right there for the, for the principal. So hopefully, they're not having to spend tons and tons of time putting their own data together, they can go into that data analytics and, and find that for themselves. And the last one is the Focus Schools Parent Portal. So that's just allowed us to be a little bit more focused with our communication to parents, a little bit more efficient in communications for parents, making it easier for our offices, for our teachers and everybody else to have kind of that closed-wall garden of communication where they can, where they can talk to parents. The next up is our infrastructure. So, again, we replaced every edge switch in the district last summer, so that was around sixty-five switches. We did all that in-house, we saved a lot of money on the install on that, so that was fantastic that we had the staff to be able to do that. We also traded or changed out all of our access points, our wifi access points, so now we're wifi-six. And wifi-six, that's just going to improve wireless performance, or it has improved wireless performance, it reduces congestion. We have a lot of density at our larger buildings, like at the high school, when you have, you know, was it fifteen, sixteen hundred students turning the Chromebooks on all at one time and everybody connects to the wireless at once, that can be a problem sometimes, so having these upgraded wifi, or the upgraded wifi access has made a big difference. East Middle School, we increased East Middle School's capacity. You may not know this, but East Middle School is kind of on their own pipe, they're not, they don't share the district network, so they're on their own pipes. Was their need for data and their technology uses increased, we've had to increase the actual capacity in that building or the data in that building. We also use that as a backup, if we have issues on this main campus, we're able to roll everybody here over to East Middle School. It's not the greatest experience for our users when we do that, because that's a pretty large amount of data that we're sending over there. But at least everybody gets to stay up, phones stay up, copiers stay up, and the data's a little slow, but usually, it doesn't take, doesn't take a ton, a ton of time to get that done. Our partnership with Vero Networks, so we are beginning, in the beginning phases of our fiber network, our district-wide fiber network on the north side. So we did a south side with Bluebird, and now we're doing a north side with another vendor, Vero. And that's going to give us some, some resiliency that we don't have right now with our network, meaning we're, we're, we've designed more of a ring structure with them as opposed to kind of a spoke structure which we, which we have right now. So if a piece of fiber gets cut right now anywhere in our system, it pretty much brings everybody down. Or if we're trying to build some resiliency and build that ring in, where if it gets cut here, we can still go around and keep, keep everybody up while that gets fixed, because sometimes fixing fiber is a, is a lengthy process, can take, can take some time. And then finally, we've been partnering with the Buildings and Grounds Team on security cameras and access control. So just want to give a shout out to, to Scott Dobson and his team, and they've been great to work with, but as we've added security cameras into buildings and, and changed our access control a little bit, around a little bit, that's, that's been a great partnership for us there as well. Thank you. All right, so department goals. So we did, we did pretty good on our department goals this year, so I'm, I'm kind of excited to bring these out for you guys. But the first one there is our minimum district standard of technology. Now, we did not meet that one, we're at seventy-seven percent. Hopefully, I'll be speaking with you in, in the coming months about bringing more interactive televisions into the, into the district. We really have our two middle schools and our academy, or our two buildings, our three buildings left that, that need to get those interactive displays. And once we've done that, we'll have, we'll have knocked that, that one out, I think. So, our uptime, which this is our network uptime, which I was talking about before a little bit, it's above that ninety-nine point eight percent mark, so we hit that one. The third one there is really a testament to that group that was on that second slide. So getting ninety percent of people to agree on anything is really tough, getting ninety percent of people to agree on anything technology is really, really tough. Getting ninety percent of people to agree that their service and technology is good, I've never done that before, so I'm really proud of my team for doing that. And getting it to ninety-two percent is, is outstanding for them and, and something we strived for a really, for a really long time. So we're happy to, happy to present that for sure tonight. User satisfaction with our wireless access, believe it or not, that has come up like forty percentage points since we started tracking that. So it keeps moving up and up, the eighty-five percent has never changed, we've always been reaching for the eighty-five percent, and we are, we're very, very close at this point. So that's another one that we're, we're excited about. Our cybersecurity standards, our music standards, we have reached all of those. And then, that last one there is something that I have spent a fair amount of my last year and a half, the last year of my, and half of my life doing, which is moving away from Tyler Technologies to Focus School Solutions. And so, while I say on there it's a hundred percent complete, I feel like every day we're working on that and doing, doing different things with that. But it has been fully implemented at this point, all the teachers are using it, we're enrolling with it. Pretty much all the modules that we're expecting to have in place are all up and running and, and active for the district, so. That one has been, that one's been a chore, too, but that's, that's nice to have that behind us. So moving forward, what we would, what we're wanting to move towards, what we're, our, our goals for, for May of twenty-twenty-six. So the Vero project that I was telling you about, having that a hundred percent complete is one of the projects that we want to have completed by twenty-twenty-six. We want to continue with the ninety-nine point eight percent uptime for the district, I think that's always an important goal for any technology department to have, because if that's not happening, a lot of things are stopping, just overall in the district. A lot, a lot of things aren't working if your network's not up. So our help desk ticket, ninety percent, and I'd like to ask permission to change that while I'm here, because really, we wanted to move that to ninety-five percent, to see if we could move it even higher than that ninety percent, because we already reached that, so that's kind of old news. So we'd really like to change that to ninety-five percent, so I hope you won't hold me to that. Oh, it is ninety-five percent, I skipped one down, I'm sorry. That's ninety percent of help desk tickets will resolve within the established service-level agreement times, so sorry. So, our service-level agreements, we were at about eighty-seven percent, and we want to, we want to reach ninety percent. So that's the two days that you're gonna contact, and three days is gonna be resolved. So we want to get that up to ninety percent, we need to move that up a little bit. My next one is ninety-five percent, so good, I had that right. Overall user satisfaction, so we want to make sure that, we want to keep improving on that, move that ninety-two to ninety-five. The ninety percent of district classrooms, like I said, we still have some work to do in three buildings, so I want to finish that goal up and, and get that complete. And then, I want to continue to hammer away on the wireless access eighty-five percent goal. So I want to, at some point, be able to stand up here in front of you guys and say that we got to eighty-six percent and, and feel really good about that. Sorry, you won't be here for that bill, sorry. Maybe next time, though, you can, I'll invite you.
Why couldn't you meet the goal while I was?
I know, that's terrible, that's my questions for later. So, opportunities for improvement. Obviously, everybody's got places where they can, where they can prove. Places that I'd really like to focus, the data loss prevention tools for monitoring, there's just so much data that's important. It's important that it's protected, it's important that we're doing everything we can do to make sure that it's safe. So making sure that we're staying up to date on those loss prevention tools and doing everything we can to protect our students and our staff's data. We want to make sure that we're continuing to do that. Our UPSs, which is our battery backups in buildings, we want to make sure those are staying current. Those allow us to make sure that our really expensive equipment doesn't get damaged in case of thunderstorms or, or power outages, power surges, things like that. And then, just, we want to make sure that we're staying on top of and, and staying vigilant about our incident response preparedness. Because, you know, with, with, if, when something happens, we want to make sure that we are ready to respond as a district and that we're, we're doing all the right things, and that we're able to get the district back up and running as quickly as we, as we possibly can. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions, or?
So we've done, you guys have done a phenomenal job, and it's a very large district, so kudos to your team, and I'm sure they would all love to be here.
Oh, yeah.
It's our favorite thing, too. With all of our new softwares and things that we have put in place, you ever considered a pen test?
Yes, actually, we have.
Penetration test, for those of you that are, yes.
So pen, pen testing, we have actually done that with several companies. We looked into, so there's kind of two different ways you can do that, is, you know, contract with someone that can come in and do pen testing. We also looked at a company that, where we, you could pen test yourself, so they provided you all the tools, and then you could, you could run the pen test yourself. So we have done a lot of self-pen testing. We also are partner, we partner with CISA, and so every week, they're scanning our network, looking for vulnerabilities, and they send us a weekly report that tells us how we're doing, and places that maybe if, if they see a vulnerability, they, they tell us about us as, as well. So that's, that's a fantastic question, though, yes.
Okay, perfect, because, you know, there's, we should have a class, a hacking class, you know, that'd be another real-world learning, learning, too. Any other questions?
Mr. Gooding.
Yes, sir.
Ryan, just, I completely appreciate the work you've put in with you and your team. Just from where the district has, was when my kids were first going to school here, and to the point now, has been pretty stark, pretty amazing. It's a lot of, a lot of thankless hours, especially during COVID, when we're having to rapidly increase bandwidth, increase our capacity, so, you know, much appreciated for your, your efforts there. And, you know, I'm trying to think of something to give you a hard time on, but I can't right now. I'll think of something.
I know you will, I know you will.
But seriously, I appreciate, appreciate what you, what you've done for, for the district.
Thank you, I appreciate your service, too.
Ryan, I have two questions. I noticed in November, when it was critical, we had a critical problem with, what was that again?
Oh, my.
You had the?
Attempts.
The attempts, the critical.
Oh, you're talking about the, okay, you're talking about the presentation, I thought you were just talking about something else, okay, yes. So that's the, maybe a spike in November, or it was red, the red bar in November?
Yeah. Was that, is that, this may be a silly question, was that just Ray Peck specifically? Or do you ever notice that, that, or hear that that's other districts, too, that there's a bigger problem out there causing it to be a critical impact?
Yeah, so, so usually, something like that is, was a specific intrusion attempt on the district. So that's, all those are specifically on our network, our district network. But typically, we're not the first place that something like that gets rolled out, so it's already been done somewhere else. So that specific one could have been, a teacher brought in a thumb, thumb drive from outside the district that had malware on it, plugged it in and tried to run, you know, or they didn't try to run it, it just tried to launch a program, or it could have been a teacher got phished and tried to download something that was really malicious that could have caused a lot of damage, and that we just found it and caught it before they actually launched it.
Okay.
But, but yet, yes, it's happened, I mean, we're definitely not special in that case, it is happening to schools all over the place.
So something could cause it to be critical just from a teacher innocently bringing in a thumb drive and?
Yeah, I mean, as far, from a, from a security posture, our biggest weakness are, is our users. The people on our campus, that is the, our biggest vulnerability are the people that are here. That's why the education piece of it's so important and keeping that kind of front and center for them and just making them know it's important. Sometimes you talk about something, you know, people think it's important, so. But that, that's our biggest vulnerability is.
Okay.
700 users and, you know, 6,000 people that aren't necessarily on the same side as we are whenever we're trying to do security stuff, so.
Okay, and then why is East Middle School not on our, why are they?
Yeah.
Because of where they're placed in the district?
It's because whenever that building was built, there was nothing, there was nothing out there. Yeah, so they, it was cheaper for us as a district to, to work with probably AT&amp;T to run five or just to that one building as opposed to bring it into, loop it into the whole campus.
So we couldn't switch it over when we built the ninth grade center?
Well, we could have. I don't want to, because I like having that.
Oh, as a backup?
Yep, I like having that as a little bit of a backup. Absolutely, yeah.
That was my question, if they're connected.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you, Ryan.
Appreciate you.
Appreciate it. So in the informational items, there are board policies for first review. Dr. Seigel, do you want to say anything about this?
Correct, yes. The policy committee reviewed eight policies last month. Seven of those policies that you see there are, the language that you see that's suggested are mandatory changes based on legislative, passing of the legislation in the state legislature. One policy that isn't, is solely voluntary, is 1422 Advertising and Signage on District Property. We have had this discussion as a leadership team as to bringing you a policy that allows the district to prohibit political campaigning on property. And so this policy would achieve that end goal. All these policies are informational only tonight. We'll let them sit for 30 days. If you have any questions on them or suggestions, get back to us. If not, they will be on the formal consent agenda for next month.
You have like five seconds, so, okay. On to action items. The first action item is the 2025-26 Employee Benefits. Dr. Seigel?
Yes, Dr. Hatfield is here tonight to lead you through the first two items. The first on employee benefits and the second on salary schedules. Dr. Hatfield?
Good evening. As we touched on last week at our work session, we are coming to you this evening the request for our benefits renewal package. Not a lot to highlight, just a few things this year. Our medical coverage, we did negotiate a renewal rate of 3% this year, which in talking to my colleagues is very, very good. We, we came out in pretty good shape. The increased cost to the district for that 3% increase is about $205,000, almost $200,006. There's only plan changes are in regard to the deductible. There is a statutory change through the IRS that will require our deductible to go from $3,200 to $3,300. That would have changed no matter what, so that, that was required. The more significant change, but not impactful to a large number of our membership, is that weight loss medications, coverage for those is being removed. That is quite a cost to the plan. And Team Ray Peck discussed that, and it was voted upon that we would recommend removing that to maintain a lower renewal rate. I do want to emphasize, however, that medications that are often associated with diabetes and weight loss, if they are provided for diabetes, they will not be impacted by this change at all. There are no other changes. We are remaining with Sun Life Delta Dental Reliance Standard for Life Insurance and Calm Psych for our Employee Assistance Program with no premium and changes. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I know we had a lot of conversations over the last month or so on the decisions that were made, and I truly appreciate the team and Team Ray Peck for having those hard conversations and ultimately coming up with a, a rate increase of 3% with those changes. So I do appreciate that. I need a motion to approve the employee benefits for the 2025-26 school year as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. On to the 25-26 salary schedules. Dr. Hatfield?
Thank you. Also, as we discussed last week at our work session, we are bringing to you our salary schedules for the upcoming school year this evening. They are provided for you in your packet. Just as a reminder, the average salary increase across all employee groups for the 25-26 school year is approximately 2.7%. That does vary here and there, but the average increase does come out to 2.7, and no one will receive an increase less than that. That does bring our starting teacher salary to $43,622. Does, I took a look this afternoon about where that places us with other school districts in the area. If nobody else changes anything, it would actually move us up a couple notches to be ninth out of 20. This year, we're 11th out of 20. But we would be, for other school districts, we would be less than $1,000 away from. So although it's not huge growth, we are making some progress. I anticipate, though, that other districts will make some increases as well. So we will probably stay about status quo in our comparison to other school districts. Any questions I can answer for you?
Again, we appreciate the work. We know we've, these board meetings, we, we approve it, but we've had lots of conversations in the work sessions, and I know you had to, you and your team had to come up with a whole lot of new schedules. So we appreciate that work to get into line with all of the pieces that you need to with minimum wage and all of the changes. So thank you.
You're welcome.
I need a motion to approve the 25-26 salary schedules as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Now, thank you, Dr. Hatfield. Now we'll move on to the Mr. Scott Dobson Show for the rest of the evening with the Ray Peck Academy Secured Entry.
Awesome. Thank you very much. We'll try to go nice and slow, then extend this. All right, good evening. I have a couple items this evening to talk about. The first one is going to be the addition of a secured entry and secured vestibule here at the Academy Building on the eight, or the 912 entryway, if you will, of the Academy to help make that one look more and feel like a lot of the other entryways in the district. Help secure the entryway a lot at a private office for Mr. Myers and also for the secretary out front there. Utilizing Sourcewell Co-op and the Wilson Group, we'd like to move forward with this project in the amount of $118,820.65 with a 5% contingency on this one. I'm happy to answer any questions about this.
Is it the doors that face Shaw?
It would be, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the bid for security upgrades at Ray Peck Academy utilizing the Sourcewell Co-op in the amount of $118,820.65 with a 5% contingency for any unforeseen circumstances.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. On to the South Middle School RTU cranes.
Yes, so preparing for the rest of our couple final steps for the South Middle School early revamp of the heating cooling system. With that, one of the items that has to be subcontracted that we're not able to do ourselves would be the ability to own a crane and perform that work, so we do have to outsource that. We listed that out for an RFP. We got two successful responses to that, and that is simply just because of the size of crane that is needed. There is only two companies in Kansas City that have that ability. So that was vetted out. With that being, being said, we'd like to move forward with Wilson, or Wilkerson Crane Rental for the project. I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
Is this something our heavy equipment program will cover in the future?
Well, I don't know. I don't know if the pocketbook would like that one.
Well, not to buy a crane, maybe, but to operate it. I need a motion to approve the bid for a crane for replacement of rooftop units at South Middle School from Wilkerson Crane Rental in the amount of $41,406.40 plus a 15% contingency for any overtime or delays.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for waiting until I was done this time. So, back, back to the Scott Dobson Show with the Eagle Glen Calming Space.
All right. As we continue to improve these spaces throughout the district, we have a few elementaries left to continue to improve our calming spaces for our staff and our students, making those spaces a much more user-friendly, safe environment for all parties involved. With that being said, we have also worked with, our interior design group actually helped us, a student-based group worked with us to, to help administer some of the finishes for this one. With that, we'd like to move forward with the Gordian Group, again, utilizing the Co-op for that project as well. I'm happy to answer questions on this one or concerns.
Is that renovating the existing calming space that we have, or is it moving classrooms around? Are we taking something different away?
Yep, in this particular situation, we are taking a classroom and then breaking that into two calming spaces along with a, a added calming space for the, for the teacher. That is what we've been doing throughout the district, and they will also then, we will give them back their existing calming spaces that they're utilizing, that were some staff offices originally, and those will actually be returned to staff offices.
And did you say this is the last elementary that needs?
Oh, we do have one left.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions? I need a motion to approve the proposal to remodel the calming space at Eagle Glen Elementary utilizing the Sourcewell Cooperative in the amount of $124,794.65.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? I've forgotten to ask that part. So all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. On to the South Middle School HVAC Commissioning.
Awesome. One of our final steps for the South Middle School to make that project complete would be our commissioning of that building. Once we're complete, once the in-house labor is complete on that, and all of our contractors are complete with the automation controls install. With that being said, we'd like to continue our partnership with Henderson Building Solutions. We have seen great success with them through the completion of the last bond issue. And I think that the district saved a considerable amount of money with a lot of our commissioning. They found out some errors and were able to get those all corrected. So I really, really see a great benefit in this, and it really helped our district on these last couple of projects. And I'd like to continue that partnership forward with them for the South Middle School. Happy to answer any questions on that.
I need a motion to approve the bid for South Middle School HVAC Commissioning from Henderson Building Solutions in the amount of $89,800.
So moved.
I need a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Carol? Motion passes unanimously. On to the Integrated Learning House Concrete.
Again, as we continue to put the final touches on Integrated Learning House, one of our probably most prized projects for this coming summer to finish up, and one of the most current projects we have working. We would like to approve a bid from Herring Contracting LLC to go ahead and finish up the exterior concrete. This was something that was bid months ago when we did the footings and the interior slab. At that time, we did not feel comfortable moving forward with the exterior concrete, just because it wasn't needed yet. And we continued to seek partnerships from other vendors. To date, we haven't been quite successful on that, so we'd like to move forward with this bid. Happy to answer questions there.
I need a motion to approve the proposal for concrete slab slash flatwork for the Integrated Learning House from Herring Contracting LLC in the amount of $77,535.60 plus a 5% contingency for any unforeseen circumstances.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. And last but not least.
Last but not least.
The South Middle School Plumbing Parts.
All right. To go ahead and finish this project up and hopefully be done with all the RFPs on this one, we'd like to go ahead and sign up Ferguson Enterprises LLC for our plumbing supplier. If it will be for all the parts for the condensate drains, all the gas piping, things like that, that we'll be doing ourselves, we just obviously have to buy all those parts and pieces. So we were able to find a good Co-op to partner with on this. E&amp;I Cooperative is the Co-op for that, ran through Ferguson, and we'd like to go ahead and continue that partnership with the discounts, agreed upon discounts for this. Happy to answer questions.
Okay.
Scott, before you.
Yes.
We leave this tonight. South Middle School, your team is doing a lot of work on that to keep the costs down.
That's correct.
And so I think a lot of the things that you're seeing about Scott, South Middle School, is that because we have to piecemeal it, because we don't have one big umbrella we're doing.
That is correct.
You guys are doing most of the work. Is that correct?
That is very correct. Yep, yeah. Instead, most likely, you would see in the past, one single bid come from just one contractor, had all these fees and, and things built into it. Just like Dr. Seigel said, this one is all in-house, so every piece is having to be purchased that we will not be doing ourselves.
So if we were to put an estimate to it, are we saving labor?
It's the tune currently, our best estimates are between $650,000 to $750,000.
Of savings in just this project?
That's correct, for just these 35-ish units.
Okay, that's amazing.
Yeah.
That's real money.
It is.
It is.
We have some super talented people on staff that are able to do that. So I just wanted to make sure the board is aware of the expertise that your team has.
Uh, I think we're going to be able to have three interns as well this summer. So we, we currently have three HVAC interns, or two HVAC interns, one electrical. I think we're going to keep two of those on, maybe hopefully throughout the summer, and they'll be instrumental on this project.
Are those pulled from LEED?
They are. They are HVAC students.
Awesome.
Yeah, I mean, that would be my question. Do you have enough help?
We do. Yep. Yep, we have all summer. We got a great plan. And again, with some added assistance, I think, for these LEED students, it's really helpful. We've seen great success in those, that partnership so far. They're on about their second month of continuing that partnership right now, and it's tremendous. Seeing the students work every day is, is excellent, and they've learned a whole lot.
Good.
I need a motion to approve the bid for plumbing parts from Ferguson Enterprises LLC utilizing the E&amp;I Cooperative with a total cost not to exceed $100,000.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All, any questions? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Scott. 100%. On to committee reports. Is this where I give it to you? Nope, okay. Any committee reports? No. Perfect. On to the superintendent's update. Dr. Seigel?
Thank you. I came to the podium tonight because there'll be a couple of special recognitions we want to make during my time. But first, I want to talk to you a little bit about last night's event at the Teacher of the Year and Support Staff Employee of the Year banquet. We were able to award Ed Ruska, who is the Crossing Guard at Eagle Glen Elementary School with the Support Staff Employee of the Year, and Dr. Joanna Clark, science teacher at South Middle School with the Teacher of the Year, and she will then be our entry into the statewide Teacher of the Year program here in the state of Missouri. So congratulations, 19 awesome finalists. And I told the team last night that I think we found our staff spotlight schedule for the upcoming school year, because each one of those individuals, team members are 100% outstanding, would be worthy of a staff spotlight. So congratulations to all of our 19 finalists and our two award winners. Board, as you know, next week is spring break. So the district will take a collective sigh of relief from the winter weather that we've had over the past several months. The offices will be open at ASC, but closed district-wide for the entire week of next week. So we wish everyone a safe and fun spring break. At this time, I would like for our Board of Education to come to the area over here where we have our awards all at once. I want to single one person out in particular and the group out as a whole, so. Look at Bill follow directions. Thank you, Bill. Appreciate, this is the roast. This is Bill's final regular board meeting after more than six years of service to this community. On April 8th, when voters go to the polls, they will not see Bill's name on the ballot because he chose not to run for reelection. Bill, we want to take this time to thank you for your service. Bill took the oath of office November 8th, 2018, when he was selected to fill an unexpired term when Kim Bailey resigned from the board and was appointed to the State Board of Education. He was reelected in April of 2019 and again in April of 2022. He is only one of three board members who were on the board when I was hired as superintendent. Now, there's only two left. Board? Board. Hiring a superintendent is one of the school board's primary responsibilities. Another primary responsibility is to make policy. This area of work was vital during our pandemic as when Bill helped navigate the board and uncharted territory. Through our board's leadership and partnership, our district was able to work through federal, state mandates, guidelines and can eat to half school. And our classrooms, buses and board meetings have all taken a different look during, since that time. During your years of service, Bill, you've been a strong supporter of the district through several ballot initiatives, the construction of new facilities and the addition of several new programs. You've been a voice of reason and leadership on this board and I will miss you and all the board members will miss you as well because we could look to you for that voice of leadership and reason. We thank you for your service and for your work to make this district a better place for students. Pam has the presentation of the bell with clapper. There we go. That's awesome. Take a picture and then. Bill, if you'd like to say anything to the community who's watching tonight or anything, you can have the podium if you'd like, only if you'd like to do that. All right.
I just, uh, just wanted to say, you know, I, I had thought about, boy, do I want to write something down or do I want to, you know, speak it from the hip? And I'm generally good with speaking from the hip, so, um, I just truly appreciate, you know, being on the board. Uh, truly appreciate all the work that you all do. I think this, you know, as I transition out, it's, it's, uh, bittersweet. It's sweet in that we're leaving, I think, the board in a good spot, that I think we're all like-minded. Um, we bring different talents, different ideas, different thinking, but it's with one vision and that's success for our students and success for our, our teachers. You know, since I've been in this district, I've seen, we moved in 2010 and my kids have grown through this district and I don't think that they would be the people they are without the teachers that they had, uh, had time with. And they, they really, the teachers really just, you know, took an interest in them. And you can see that that's what our teachers do. They, they, uh, take an interest to our, our students and they want success for our students. And I know one of the, you know, the couple of big things on the board have been, you know, the COVID issue and that interesting chaos. Um, but it was always, as a board, we was al, we were always unified that we needed students in the seats. We needed students in the schools and we navigated those as the best, our best capabilities. And I was, uh, proud of that fact and will always be proud of that fact. And I will stand, uh, to, uh, you know, argue that with anybody. That's, that's what our goal was. Uh, the other one was, uh, hiring Dr. Slagel. You know, there was a lot of discussion in the room. Uh, there wasn't a lot of discussion. It was, it was, uh, you know, a, a true blessing that, you know, he came to this district uh, when, when it was needed, his leadership was needed. Um, he, he has shown that he, even though he is not from Raymore like, like I am, I'm not run from Raymore, but he dove in and wanted to know what the culture was like, wanted to know what the community was like. And he is, uh, he's been a mainstay at every, every, uh, greeting for our students saying hi. I know there's times he's thinking, why did I start that? Um, because it's cold and rainy, but, uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, he's, he's provided a tremendous amount of leadership for, for this district and he's guided the cabinet, but the cabinet's been fantastic. You know, the administrative staff, everybody in that, that building has been fantastic for this district and, and, uh, transitioning to, uh, a different way of learning. And, you know, we're, I think, we have the visionaries for that. We have critical thinkers for that and we are, uh, our students are, that are there now and soon to be, uh, part of, uh, our school district, uh, are going to be forever changed because of that. So, um, you know, I, I challenge anybody that, that, uh, you know, wants to make a difference uh, in their community, is being on the school board. There's a lot of, uh, naysayers, a lot of, uh, attacks, uh, whether that be now that I can say it, politically, legislatively, uh, whether it's, uh, at the state level or the federal level. They are, are leading by fear and by, uh, their own agenda. Our agenda has always been kids. Our agenda has always been providing them the best education possible to go on and be successful, uh, citizens. And that's what public education does. And I will forever fight for that. My, my sister was a teacher, my mom was a teacher. And I would probably challenge that every legislator that's in the state of Missouri, the majority of them were public school educated and they've lost sight of what that means. So, um, now that I can say those things, it's relieving. It's really relieving. But, uh, you know, I, I'm, I'm proud of this, proud of this district. I would, I would push anybody towards this district, this community, um, whether it's Raymore or Peculiar. That, uh, you know, that's why we chose, one of the reasons we chose here, the school district. And we didn't know how impactful it was going to be on our kids, but, um, we know now how impactful it was and it's going to be impactful to a lot of students moving forward. But, uh, you know, I, I appreciate Dr. Slagel and his leadership and everybody here and your, your leadership and, and the roles you've played in, in making this district, district successful. Uh, would just challenge the board to continue doing the good work, fighting the good fight. You know, don't lead out of fear, lead out of common sense and reason and be steadfast in your, your decisions. Um, that's, that's all you can ask. Leave all the, all the noise aside. Let all the noise go, all the naysayers. Uh, if I would say anything, to get off social media. Because, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna see a lot of the naysaying in that, that realm. So, um, you know, like I said, this is bittersweet, but I knew I'm, even though I, I love, I've loved my time on the board, it just, I just didn't have the capacity to continue. And I think somebody that needs, the people that need to be on the board, need to have, be full and haven't been able to make a lot of committee meetings. And so that, that told me right there that, yeah, it's, it's time to move on and let somebody else take the, take the torch. So, uh, board, I wish you well. And it's been, it's been a fun ride and although it sounds like a eulogy, I'm not dying. You know, I'll still be around, I'll still be, uh, I'll be, still be there if you need me to advocate for anything and, uh, be a, be a, a, uh, voice of reason for anything. So, uh, but I appreciate everybody's input, everybody's, um, skillset that they bring. Because each one of you has a unique skillset that you bring. And, uh, you know, it'll be same with Mr. Garrison, he'll, he'll bring in something too. So, um, just thank you and, and charge on and move forward.
All right, board. Stick around right there, board members. The state of Missouri used to designate a particular week for school board recognition. That has changed. The governor now has proclaimed the entire month of March as School Board Recognition Month here in Missouri. So I want to publicly thank you for your dedicated energy and countless hours devoted to our community, devoted to our, our team here. I mean, this, this is a group of seven that works so well with our group of eight to make a group of 15, make this district go. Our students, staff and families benefit from every day from your service. And I might remind the public that these board members who are elected local residents do not receive any pay for their efforts. We are joining countless communities across the state in honoring the dedicated service of local boards of education. Thank you for your important contributions as you play a vital role in the education of our Ray Peck students. And to recognize your service, we have received certificates of appreciation from Missouri School Boards Association that Pam Steele will hand out now, as well as, as letters of appreciation for Representative Bill Irwin's office in Jefferson City. After we are done here tonight, we'll also present you with tokens of appreciation that you won't want to miss, so make sure you stick around for that. It's not a, it's not a car. Board members, thank you very much for your, for your service.
Thank you for that update, Dr. Slagel. Now on to the Board of Education comments. Bill took all the time. There's no more time left for that? No, turn that off.
I have a few more things I want to say.
Yep, you're done. Ryan, turn off his mic. Um, I will echo what Dr. Slagel and all the cabinet would say, I believe, and say thank you again. Um, we have a lot of fun up here sometimes and, um, you'll be missed, but we'll replace you, so it's fine. On calendar events, April 14th is the reorganization meeting at 6:00 PM and April 24th is the regular meeting at 7:00 PM. And if there's nothing else, meetings adjourned.